Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It is 7:00 PM on September fifteenth, and our first item of business is to establish quorum. We have six council members present, so we do have quorum. And I'd like to begin with a land acknowledgement. This land on which Athens resides was settled and developed by earlier people, particularly the Shauni and the Osage, and those identified through cultures commonly known as the Adena Hopewell Fort Ancient. This acknowledgement reminds us of the importance of honoring history, people, and the planet as we work to improve our city's legacy. The next item of business is disposition of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for a regular session of August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Wonderful. The August eighteenth minutes have been approved. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of our regular session of City Council held September second, two thousand and twenty-five?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. The minutes for September second have been approved. Moving on to communications, do we have any communications from council members that they'd like to read at this time? Members of the administration? Acting Mayor?
Yes.
Any communications or reports?
Yes. I have a proclamation to read on behalf of Mayor Patterson, who's unable to be with us tonight. This is from the office of the mayor. Whereas in nineteen sixty-eight, President Lyndon B. Johnson signed into law the establishment of Hispanic Heritage Week, and in nineteen eighty-eight, Public Law one hundred dash four oh-two expanded the celebration to Hispanic Heritage Month to recognize the history, culture, and contributions of Hispanic and Latina communities nationwide. And whereas the start date of September fifteen is significant, as it marks the anniversary of independence for several Central American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, with Mexico's independence following on September sixteen, and Chile's on September eighteen. And whereas the city of Athens is enriched by the contributions of Hispanic and Latina residents, including students, faculty, and staff at Ohio University, local Hispanic and Latina-owned businesses, and community and cultural organizations that share heritage and traditions with the broader Athens community. And whereas this proclamation acknowledges that Hispanic, Latino, Latina, Latinx, and Latina are inclusive and acceptable identifiers used by members of the community. And whereas recognizing Hispanic, Latina Heritage Month is an opportunity to embrace equitable inclusion and encourage all residents to celebrate and learn about all histories, cultures, and contributions of Hispanic and Latina communities in Athens and Athens County. And whereas local programming is taking place in Athens and Athens County to honor Hispanic, Latina Heritage Month, including library storytimes, community meals, and university events, and the City Council encourages residents to engage with and support these efforts. Now therefore, Steve Patterson, Mayor of the City of Athens, Ohio, hereby proclaims September fifteen through October fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five, as Hispanic, Latina Heritage Month, and encourage residents, schools, businesses, community groups, and cultural organizations to honor this month through events, educational programming, public art, and cultural celebrations. That's all I have. President Pro Tem, my care.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Crowell. And I will note that our neighbors in the village of Chancy recently, just last week, adopted a proclamation of Hispanic Heritage Month as well. Do we have any other administrators, members of the administration who'd like to make a report? All right. Um, yes.
Mike.
Oh, yes. Please, Member Wood, communications.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that I've gotten a number of communications from residents and about the article about the tree commission being weakened. A lot of people expressing concern about that. People encouraging us to keep a strong central tree commission. And so I'm hoping that we'll get an update from the administration about that. Many people speaking out in support of keeping that body intact and functioning. So I wanted to share that.
Thank you, Member Wood. Any other communications or reports from council members? If not, we'll move on to ordinances for third reading? All right, seeing none. First for third reading is ordinance eighty-two twenty-five, an ordinance amending certain sections of the Athens City Code, Title Nine, General Regulations, Chapter nine point one zero, Cutting Weeds, Section nine point zero one point zero five, Costs. This is an ordinance that has been reviewed in committee. We do have a number of students and folks who haven't been to council members in the council meetings in the past, so I'll go ahead and explain that this is an ordinance that is building on our practice of assigning fees to individuals who have properties where weeds are out of control. This isn't introducing a new law, but just changing where we establish the fees set for those sorts of penalties. And this has been introduced in committee and discussed, and now is being read for the third time. So at this point, we invite comments from members of council, any updates or questions they might have before we take a vote on this ordinance. Any comments from council?
I move that we pass eighty-two twenty-five.
Second.
Wonderful. Do we have any comments or discussion from council, from the administration, from members of the public? If you'd like to ask a question about this or make a comment, you all have the opportunity to take the podium, introduce yourselves, indicate if you're representing just yourself or an organization, and then everyone's entitled to three minutes. That's not necessary for each item. This is just about how we assign fees for weeds, but we want folks to know that they do have that opportunity. And we've had a motion and a second, so I will call for a vote for approval of ordinance eighty-two dash twenty-five. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ordinance passes unanimously. Next ordinance for discussion for third reading this evening is ordinance eighty-three dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending Title Nine, General Regulations, Chapter nine point zero one, Animals at Large. Again, this is something that's been read at committee and discussed, is being read for the third time this evening, and I will read the pertinent section E. The service safety director shall supply code enforcement officers, police officers, parking enforcement, and dog warden with citation tickets for the purpose of notice to persons violating Section nine point zero one, point zero one, A, B, or D. The notice may be given by delivering such a ticket to the violator or by fixing it to the dwelling unit housing of a violator. This is essentially if you let your dog get out and they become a potential hazard to other individuals. This is an ordinance amending how we assign fees for that. So do we have any comments or perhaps a motion to pass ordinance eighty-three dash twenty-five?
I move we pass ordinance eighty-three dash twenty-five.
Second.
Terrific. Any discussion from council? Comments or questions from the administration? Members of the public? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of adopting ordinance eighty-three dash twenty-five, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed, say nay. All right, eighty-three dash twenty-five passes unanimously. Next, we have ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title Seven, Traffic Code, Chapter seven point zero five, Parking Regulations Introduced by Councilmember Spielness.
Yes, as the others have, this has been read. This is now the third reading, so we'll be voting on this. Minor changes to an existing ordinance. So this is regarding parking regulations, and the added section says the fee for city contractor bags shall be established by separate ordinance. So that's for when a developer contractor wants to reserve some spots, and you put a bag, you've all seen that, you can't park here because anyway, so it's about that. And then down here further, it says that elected officials of the city of Athens may park without charge in the city parking garage during meeting times and while on official business. So that means us and these folks. And one other change, and this is to encourage people to volunteer for the city boards and commissions. So members of city boards and commissions and their support staff, whose primary meeting location is in City Hall, may park without charge in the city parking garage during meeting times only. So you can't go off to lunch and hang out downtown. You just have to do that when you're working. But again, this helps for people who want to volunteer, and you know, they don't get paid for it, so it's helpful to get easy parking because it's not all that easy all the time. And one other change on C, the provisions related to city parking garage apply twenty-four hours per day, Monday through Saturday, Sundays, and holidays, and dates determined by the service safety director, that's a minor change, are exempt from charges. So I move that we vote and pass this ordinance, these amendments to this ordinance.
Second.
All right, I've heard a motion and a second for ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-five. Any discussion from council members? Yes?
I would just like to say that I'm really glad there's this provision in here to let people who are volunteering on city commissions park for free, basically, during their meetings. I know, I'm the city council rep on the Environment and Sustainability Commission, and we have four students who are on that, and I have felt bad for them having to pay to park. So the fact that that the cost of parking, you know, monthly for a meeting is no longer going to be a barrier, I think is a very good step. A minor one, I know this is not the most exciting thing, but I do think that will be beneficial to people.
Thank you, Member Claude Felder. Do we have any comments from members of the administration? Members of the public? All right, seeing none, we've had a motion and a second. We'll call for a vote for approval of eighty-four dash twenty-five. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, the motion passes, ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-five is approved. Moving on to eighty-five dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending certain sections of the Athens City Code Title Nine, General Regulations, Chapter nine point one two, Streets and Sidewalks, Section nine point one two one eight, Materials on Street or Sidewalk Introduced by Councilmember Spielness.
Thank you. And so this is a little bit more of a change, and also, Member Claude Felder, as we discussed last week, wants to make some wording changes. So can I suggest an amended wording first? Is that, okay?
Yes. Would you like to make a motion to amend?
Yeah. Hold on, let me first read the part that I think is going to stay put, and that is, G, "No dumpsters, moving pods, or construction trailers may be set on sidewalks or public streets that first being permitted by the service safety director or their designee. The fees for said permits shall be established by separate ordinance." And then H is the section that we've been discussing and that Member Claude Felder suggests some changes, which I personally think are fine. I'll read it first. H, "No temporary closure of any street, alley, or sidewalk may be allowed unless permitted by the service safety director or their designee. Any temporary closure request shall include a pedestrian and vehicle maintenance of traffic plan and follow the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, MUTCD. Sidewalks closed for extended periods must be appropriately barricaded and signed. Special event street closures are not regulated by this section. The fee for the temporary closure of any street, alley, or sidewalk per day shall be established by separate ordinance." So I'm moving that we amend this before we take it any further.
Second, and may I suggest the amendment I'm proposing?
Please.
Okay. So just one change, simple, and I just think it clarifies this ordinance, in case members of the public read it. I know it's intended towards sort of street construction professionals, but I kind of think clarity is good. So in the sentence, um...
Can you indicate which section you're starting?
I'm in section H. "I believe it is the third sentence that one that begins sidewalks closed for extended periods must be appropriately barricaded and signed. I am just proposing a clause at the end of that sentence, right after the word signed, that says alternate passageways may be required." I just think that clarifies it. And then the rest can remain special event, street closures are not regulated by this section, the fee for the temporary closure of any street, alley, or sidewalk per day shall be established by separate ordinance.
Thank you, Member Claude Felder. Would you mind reading that full sentence as it would read with the addition at the end?
I would be happy to. Sidewalks closed for extended periods must be appropriately barricaded and signed, semicolon, alternate passageways may be required.
Do we, we've had a motion and a second to amend. Do we have any discussion? Members' link?
You mentioned the word teeth. May is not teeth. Must is teeth.
Okay, we could change it to must.
Oh, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just trying to get at what you're trying to get at.
Well, that's okay, I didn't mean to tell the safety service director what to do, so I said may, which would give him a little bit of authority over that.
Fortunately, our procedures do call for some input from our administration on the proposed amendment. Director Stone, can you comment?
I would argue that may is appropriate, and it's not just in order to, you know, defer to me for the decision, but there's a time and place where we need to have some flexibility in this. Here would be an example. There's a closure for a short section in between a block that is regulated by two traffic signals. Those two traffic signals are the appropriate place for somebody to cross the street to go around a particular closed spot, both from a traffic safety perspective and from an Americans with Disabilities Act access perspective. In that instance, an alternate path is inappropriate. An alternate path would be to follow the existing signage and markings and cross at those particular traffic signals. So it would be absolutely inappropriate to require an alternate path that would cross at a spot that it wasn't safe. And so I think may is probably the right language in this particular situation. You know, I think this ordinance in and of itself already gives the necessary teeth that we require in order to make this happen, and I don't think that may is, you know, taking those away. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Stone. So we've had a motion and a second to amend, and Member Claude Felder has read the language of the amended sentence. We've had opportunity for input from council and the administration. Any input on this proposed amendment from members of the public? All right, hearing or seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the amendment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed, please say nay. All right, the amendment has passed unanimously, and now we are ready to have a motion for approval.
No, it goes back to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Back to first reading, you're right. So and for the public, in the event that we make a change at the last stage, the third reading, we have to go back to our first reading so that it has the opportunity for individuals, members of the public, to ask questions and have time to come to meetings for discussion. So that is it for ordinance eighty-five dash twenty-five for this evening, and we'll move on to ordinance eighty-seven dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending certain sections of the Athens City Code to remove gendered language and replace with gendered neutral language, introduced by all members of council. This is something that has been practiced for several years now, that we've noticed that our legal language in our municipal code consistently referred to the mayor using masculine pronouns, he, him, his, outdated language like policeman, fireman, and this is a, just a contemporary effort to acknowledge that gendered language is not necessary in these instances. And we, I'd make a motion that we adopt eighty-seven dash twenty-five.
Second.
Do we have any discussion from council members? From the administration? From members of the public, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All in favor of approval of ordinance eighty-seven dash twenty-five, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, the ordinance has been approved unanimously. Moving on to ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-five, an emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a participation agreement in the new National Opelids Purdue Direct Settlement, and acknowledging that the allocation and distribution of potential settlement funds will be pursuant to the governmental entity and shareholder direct settlement agreement available online, and declaring an emergency, introduced by all members of Do we have anyone who'd like to comment on the, this ordinance? Do we have anyone who'd like a motion to adopt eighty-eight dash twenty-five?
I move that we adopt ordinance eighty-eight twenty-five.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, I don't think I checked for discussion, thank you. Do we have any discussion, comments, questions from members of council? Members of administration and members of the public? All right, seeing none. Now I'll call for a vote for adoption of eighty-eight dash twenty-five. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate so by saying nay. All right, ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-five passes unanimously. We now move on to ordinances for second reading. For these ordinances, we are in the mid-step of allowing for public commentary and input or introduction of new information, so these typically will go faster with just the reading of the title unless there is additional information or discussion. First ordinance for second reading tonight is ordinance eighty dash twenty-five, an ordinance declaring properties located at twenty-five Central Avenue and four fifty-eight Richland Avenue no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and authorizing the mayor to sell said properties to another political subdivision authorized by Councilmember Reisner. I am filling in as acting chair for finance and personnel, which Councilmember Reisner would typically be chairing and speaking on this. And this has been introduced at committee. I am just going to check to see if we have additional information or questions on this topic at this time. Members' link?
Following our last business meeting two weeks ago, it was mentioned to me by a community individual in the housing industry that one of these properties was purchased with community development block grant funds, and as such, there may be some restrictions on the sale of that. It's been pointed out to me today that probably the best person to check on that, unless you happen to know Treasurer Thomas, would be the auditor. So we won't be voting on this till the first Monday in October, which will give us plenty of time to check with the auditor to make sure that we have dotted i's and crossed t's on this and aren't inadvertently selling property that we may not be able to sell. And we may find out that... And we may find out that, yes, we can do that, but just a little update, and I will be contacting the auditor first thing in the morning about that.
Thank you, members Swink. That's a very helpful update, and we'll look forward to getting that question answered. Any other updates or questions about 80-25? Seeing none. I'll check with the administration. Anything for 80-25 from the public? All right. Seeing none. On to ordinance 86-25. An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established Introduced by All Members of Council. Any comment from council members? Members of the administration? Members of the public? Seeing none. We'll move on to second reading of ordinance 89-25. An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a combined participation agreement in the new National OpEx settlement. Secondary manufacturers with a number of different organizations acknowledging that allocation and distribution of potential settlement funds will be pursuant to the governmental entity and shareholder direct settlement agreements available online and declaring an emergency introduced by all members of council. Do we have any comments from members of council on 89-25? Members of the administration? Members of the public? All right. Seeing none. Moving on to second reading of 90-25. An ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise and accept bids and enter into a lease agreement for the highest bidder for the former fire department headquarters on Columbus Road. Any questions or comments from council members? Anything from the administration? Anything from the public? We'll come back to members Swink.
I'd just like to question Director Stone. So that we can get this going, would it be advantageous for you, for us, to suspend the rules this evening?
Thank you.
Because we have three weeks to our next business meeting.
Sure. Thanks, members Swink. So we have to advertise for five weeks anyway.
Okay.
And my thinking, and I'm not prepared to file that advertisement yet. I'm working on it, but it's one of those things that's on the list of things to work on. So even if we advertise sometime between now and the next business meeting, it's still, we won't receive the bids until after this passes.
Okay.
So I think that it's not necessary. Just thank you for asking that.
Thank you.
Members of the public, any questions or comments about ordinance 90-25? Seeing none. We'll move on to ordinance 94-25. An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29, Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.03, Rental Dwelling, Short Term Rental and Housing Permit, Section 29.03.05, Authorized Agent, and Title I, Chapter 29.03, introduced by council member Swink.
Okay. A little audience participation here. How many of you Ohio University students rent a place other than a dormitory room? Show of hands. Okay. How many of you have a landlord or person that is of contact that does not live right here in the city of Athens, that may live far away? Okay. Few hands. What this does is establish a designated local emergency contact, someone that we can get a hold of for emergency purposes or code office. So that is a change. Basically, what it says is a rental dwelling, short term rental, or rooming house permit shall be issued or received unless the applicant designates in addition to themselves a designated local emergency contact. Also, such designated local emergency contact must reside within the county. A fee shall be established by separate ordinance for any rental, short term rental, or rooming house that is owned by a person residing 50 miles or more outside of the corporation limit. Apartment complexes with local office manager exempt, rentals with a contract with a local rental management company are exempt. That fee for people further than 50 miles away is not a penalty. It's just the cost of us doing business. For us to send certified mail and things of that nature is costing more and more every year. So it's not a penalty, like all landlords, to be responsible, and this will help us do that a little better, or not us, the code office and the administration.
Thank you, member Swink. Do we have any additional discussion for ordinance 94-25? Anything from administration? Members of the public? All right. Our final reading, second reading of the evening, is for ordinance 95-25. An ordinance granting a special right of way use of permit at 22 West Simpson Avenue to place an in-ground sign in front of the building in the city's right of way introduced by council member Swink. Any comments or discussion from council? Members of the administration? Members of the public? All right. Seeing none. That concludes our second reading for the evening. Moving on to ordinances for first reading, beginning with ordinance 96-25. An ordinance amending the 2025 Appropriation Ordinance 115-24, introduced by council member McCary, acting as acting chair of finance and personnel. This is a very brief one, so I'll read it in its entirety. Section 1 says that the 2025 Appropriation Ordinance 115-24 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $10,000 to general fund otherwise, oh, sorry, other administrative for the Ohio Governor's Imagination Library and increasing the total appropriation by said amount. Section 2 reads that the ordinance shall be in effect in full force upon passage and approval by the mayor. Do we have anyone, anyone who is excited about the Imagination Library on council who'd like to offer a comment? Members Swink?
Yeah, and I left the darn books at home. I can't believe that. Basically, what this is, is a program started by Dolly Parton, who grew up in Sevierville, Tennessee, Sevier County, between Knoxville and Gatlinburg. And what it does, it puts a book each month in the hands of children from birth to five. This is a program in the state of Ohio that our governor's spouse, our governor's wife, has gotten behind, and the state of Ohio pays for half of this in all 88 counties, just half of it. Our local library depends on other funds, including this $10,000 appropriation from the city. As I mentioned last week, when I was teaching at Athens High School and doing home visits, I was shocked at the number of homes I went into where students didn't have books at all. There were no books at all in the house. Now, that wasn't back in 1968, but it was back in 1981, just 44 years ago. We all take it for granted that we have books. This is a chance to get those books in kids' hands, starting at birth, all the way through, starting kindergarten. And when's the last time any of you got any mail that you were excited about? Physical mail in a box. Doesn't happen anymore. This is a way that young kids can look forward to the mail delivery person each month bringing them a nice book. And the book that I brought last week was for a two-year-old, and they're age appropriate, and it was called K is for Kindness. It was an alphabet book. So yeah, I'm excited about this program.
Thank you, member Swink. Member Claude Felter?
I agree with everything member Swink just said, and I would just like to add how I've asked the director of the Athens County Libraries, Nick Tepe, to give us some metrics if they're out there. But I think it's amazing that a house that might not have any books at all, which probably is hard for all of you to imagine as college students, but it's true for millions of Americans, that a kid upon starting kindergarten might have 60 books at home because they get one per month from birth to five. I find that pretty exciting, and I just really hope it benefits all those families. Plus, older siblings could read to younger siblings. If they're multiple kids, those deliveries can extend, you know, that much further. So pretty exciting, and I, for one, very much hope that the city will make this part of the annual budget.
Thank you, member Claude Felter. And it's worth noting that not all cities do choose to use their general revenue in this manner. So do we have any additional comments from council members on this first reading? Anyone from administration have a comment? Anyone from the public have a comment or question on this ordinance for first reading? All right. Seeing none. Ordinance 96-25 has been read for the first time. Next, ordinance 97-25. An ordinance amending ordinance 104-24 to capture all phases of the design, construction, and construction engineering of the city sewer system improvements project number 330 and declaring an emergency introduced by council member McCary. If you happen to log onto city council's website or YouTube videos and check over the course of time, you'll see that project 330 has been one that's been going on for quite some time to improve our sewer systems, and we are now trying to get all of the different ways that we've been financing this project into one ordinance, and that is 97-25. I will read section 2. The service safety director is hereby authorized to expend up to $17,200,000 from sewer fund plant 750.637 for all phases of said project number 330. This is, again, just about compiling all the different means of financing this project that has been happening over some time over a number of phases. Do we have questions or discussion from members of council about this ordinance? Members of the administration?
I do appreciate you bringing this up, and this is, this helps us get our arms around this. You may have talked about it till last week. I'm sorry I wasn't here, but I think there's nine different ordinances, at least, related to this over the last six years, this project. And just to reiterate, this is being funded by a 0% interest loan for 30-year repayment, which is unheard of when it comes to utility, public infrastructure loans. The reason that we're using that, putting as much into that bucket as we possibly can, is because it's good, good for the city in the long term. Additionally, we were identified for $8 million for loan forgiveness, which is functionally a debt. The Ohio Water Development Authority doesn't use grant as their mechanism of issuing grants. They use principal forgiveness. And so we were identified for $8 million of that as a grant, but functioning loan forgiveness because they're not going to give it to you unless you build the project. So basically, that will take that $17.2 million overall and reduce it down to $9.2 million when everything is said and done. And that's a big deal for all the improvements that we're getting out of this. A lot of 50-year-old plus infrastructure is getting replaced as part of this series of subprojects. Thank you.
May I ask?
Thank you. We'll ask a follow-up question from member Claude Felter, and then we'll go to acting mayor Crowe.
Director Stone, thank you very much for that information. That's really helpful to know. Just one question was brought to mind. Does that mean that we would pay all the $72.2 million worth of bills, and then when the project is actually finished being built, then they would refund $8 million?
No. Thank you for that question, member Claude Felter. So the $17.2 million is paid out to the city as a series of payments as you build the various subprojects. And then at the end of that time, you start getting, you start getting bills basically for paying back the loan. And in that case, at the end of the construction, prior to starting to pay back the loan, they look at your principal amount or hour principal amount, and they'll lower the principal amount by $8 million. So that's being high, but you don't have to, you know, get halfway through paying it back to the very end. It's the principal amount is lowered at the beginning, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Now, the good news is zero interest. So, you know, whether or not it was at the beginning or the end, it's not going to have an impact on interest as if it were a situation where there was interest being applied to the principal amount.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question and follow-up. Acting mayor Crowe, did you have a comment?
Yeah. Just to want the students and everyone to know that this is Pollution Prevention Week, the third week in September. Every year is Pollution Prevention Week. This project was largely mandated to get county residents off of septic systems and onto a modern sewer system where the waste is treated at our wastewater treatment plant. And so it's directly connected to the things that we're talking about this week at Ohio University and the city of Athens about Pollution Prevention Week.
And a follow-on to that point. The whole $17.2 million is not necessary to receive the county sewage, but the reason we were able to get the 0% financing is because this body years ago made the decision to allow for receipt of the county sewage, and so it became a regionalization loan. So I want to be clear that, you know, we're not spending $17.2 million in order to, you know, take on sewage from somebody else. The $17.2 million is probably three or four times what we would need to spend to be able to take that on, but what we're doing is replacing infrastructure that is necessary to be replaced and that is going to be receiving that, or it already is to a great extent, from that county project that acting mayor Crowe mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Stone. Do we have any questions or comments on this item from the audience, the public? All right. I have a request from auditor Het for suspension and adoption at first reading to meet project deadlines. May I have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
You may have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the suspension of the rules from council? From administration? And from members of the public? For those who are experiencing for the first time, it's sometimes necessary to meet project deadlines or other kinds of deadlines for us to not go through all readings. When we do so, we ask just that a reason be identified, and then we take a vote to ensure that an adequate number of council members support suspending the rules. And having had a first, a motion and a second, I'll now call for that vote. All in favor of suspending the rules for this ordinance, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed, say nay. All right. The rules have been suspended for ordinance 97-25. I'd now like to move that we adopt ordinance 97-25. May I have a second?
Second.
We've had a move and a second, and do we have any discussion from council? From administration? From the public? All right. So we are now ready to vote to adopt ordinance 97-25. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, indicate so by saying nay. All right. Ordinance 97-25 has been approved unanimously at first reading. Next is ordinance 98-25. An ordinance amending ordinance 130-24, authorizing a water line replacement on Factory Street, introduced by member Thomas, who's acting as acting city and safety services chair. Member Thomas, would you give us the first reading?
Yes, thank you. This is one also that we are going to ask to suspend from the auditor's office. This is a previously authorized to expend up to $220,000 to replace a water line on Factory Street while Ohio University was building the new H-Com building. This saved the city money by jumping onto their project, and they have sent the final bill, which came to an additional $500. So this is amending the original ordinance 130-24 to increase the total authorized expenditure to $222,500.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope. Nope. That's it. Any questions from council?
Do we have any questions from the administration? And from the audience? All right. Seeing none. The ordinance has been read for the first time. Thank you, member Thomas. Next.
I would move to suspend.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. All right. We have a motion to suspend. May we have a second? All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of suspension of the rules indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed, nay? Okay. The rules have been suspended. Member Thomas?
I move to adopt ordinance 98-25.
All right. Maybe have a second? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? All right. The ordinance has been adopted unanimously at first reading. Thank you, member Thomas. Next ordinance for first reading is 99-25. An ordinance approving a then and now certificate for payment and declaring an emergency, also introduced by member Thomas of the City and Safety Services Committee.
This is just a then and now certificate to pay the bill that we just talked about in the previous ordinance. The state requires us to pay that within 30 days, which the auditor is also asking us to suspend and approve on first reading tonight. This is just paying the then and now payment. This is the amount of $222,500. Is that a typo? It should be $222,500?
$222,000.
Yeah. Got it.
Yes.
And then just asking, declaring an emergency on this so that it can be paid immediately and suspending to pass it tonight. Any questions from council?
Just to point a clarification that this was just to increase authorization by just $500.
$500.
Very small. Any additional comments or questions from council members? Members of the administration?
On the suspension or?
Just, oh, wait. We are on the suspension.
Move to suspend, please.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right. We've had a move and a second. Any comments on the suspension of the rules from council? From administration? From the public? All in favor of suspending the moves, the rules? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, say nay. All right, the rules have been suspended. Member Thomas?
Thank you. I would move that we pass ninety-nine dash twenty-five.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. All in favor to adopt ordinance ninety-eight dash twenty-five, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, ordinance ninety-eight dash twenty-five has been adopted unanimously. Next is ordinance ninety-nine dash twenty-five, an ordinance approving a then-and-now certificate. Oh!
That was it.
That's it. That was it. I just didn't want the fun to end. But we'll instead move on to announcements and other business. First, I'll take a motion to approve the August twenty-twenty-five financial reports. May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving the August twenty-twenty-five financial reports, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The August twenty-twenty-five financial reports have been approved unanimously. Next is motion to approve July twenty-twenty-five credit card transactions. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second? May I have a second?
Second.
Terrific. All in favor of approving our July twenty-twenty-five credit card transactions indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? All right, the July twenty-twenty-five credit cards transactions have been approved unanimously. Moving on to additional announcements. Members Swank, would you start us out?
Yes. Thankful to the Ohio University students here today. Two of our last three meetings went two hours and forty-eight minutes, and we're going to get out of here in less than an hour tonight. So keep coming, we'll speed this thing along. We received, when I say we, city council received a recommendation from the Athens City Planning Commission to amend the city code. So what this is, is a notice of public hearing, which by Ohio law, we have to have. Athens City Council will hold a public hearing at seven PM on Monday, October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, in the council chambers on the third floor of the city building. The public hearing is to consider a recommendation from the Athens City Planning Commission to amend Athens City Zoning Code, Section twenty-three dot oh four dot oh three, permitted uses in R-three residential zone, multifamily, to prevent, to permit temporary housing shelters as a permitted accessory use for the gathering place located at one, five, and seven Congress Street. The full text of the recommendation is available by contacting Dee Walker at CI.Athens.OH.us, the young lady sitting next to me. Interested parties are invited to attend and express their opinions with respect thereto. Anyone needing special accommodations to attend the meeting should contact the city council office, eight East Washington Street, Athens, Ohio, seven four zero five nine two three three four two. Deborah Walker, Clerk of Council. This was published in the Athens Messenger, a paper of general circulation, on Saturday, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. When we do that, we have to give thirty days' notice, hence the filing date. So it'll be a hearing on October twentieth.
Thank you for that official announcement, Member Swank. I'm Member Clodfeller.
Well, I am pleased to share a save-the-date invitation that the city has received for a ribbon-cutting ceremony and open house at the historic Athens Armory in Uptown Athens. This, you may be aware, you may have seen some construction workers coming in and out. This has been a multi-year construction project to, to sort of preserve the integrity of that century-old building and make it usable again. It was once a landmark in the city of Athens and a real key part of the community, and then it's been closed for decades, but it's coming back. And so, the invitation, or the save-the-date invitation states, "Please join us in celebrating the completion of this multi-year project that has breathed new life into this cornerstone of the Athens community for another century to come." The ceremony will begin at noon on Tuesday, September thirtieth, at two West Carpenter Street in Athens. A formal invitation and agenda will be coming shortly. And that invitation was issued by Reed Courtney, the Director of Government Relations and Issue Advocacy at Sunday Creek Horizons.
Thank you, Member Clodfeller. Director Stone, could you offer additional comment?
Sure, I can just add a little bit of clarification. So on September thirtieth, the ribbon-cutting ceremony is an invitation-only event, and the reason for that is we're attempting to recognize the funders and partners on this particular event, so that is not open to the public. Subsequently, there is an open-to-the-public open house starting at three thirty on the thirtieth. And so, that invitation came from Sunday Creek Horizons, which is under contract with the city of Athens for a variety of things, and they're managing the event specifically, and so that's why members of council received that event. But we absolutely encourage members of the public at large to come from three thirty till six, at any time they'd like to, to drop in and tour and walk around and look at the facility, ask questions and such. So, thank you.
Wonderful clarification. So that's September thirtieth, three thirty PM to six PM for the public, and that's going to be very exciting. Do we have any other communications, announcements from council members? We've got a couple here. Acting Mayor Crowell already wished us a Happy Hispanic Heritage Month, but I just want to pass along a few announcements about the specific program opportunities in the local area, including bilingual storytimes and cultural workshops through the Athens County Public Libraries. You can visit their website and check out their event listings for the specifics. Latinx Film Series at the Athena Cinema on Court Street in Athens. Again, you can visit their website to check out their Latinx Film Series for Hispanic Heritage Month, and Thursday Night Suppers at United Campus Ministry on College Street featuring Hispanic Heritage Month-inspired meals and conversation. Please check out UCM's website for information about that. And finally, a week from today, our council will be in committees, not regular session, but it happens to be Rosh Hashanah, so we are happy to wish members of our Jewish community a happy and sweet New Year, a week from today. Do we have any other announcements from council members? Seeing none, we'll now have time for citizen participation. Inviting any audience members who wish to speak on items not already covered on the agenda this evening. So any member of the public who wants to speak on anything that wasn't already discussed on our agenda this evening, we now approach the podium and share your name and whether you're representing yourself or an organization, and you'll have three minutes to talk about whatever you wish that's not already been on the agenda this evening. All right, we do have one person coming forward. When you get to the mic, please introduce yourself with your name, address, and let us know if you're representing just yourself or an organization.
Yes. Hello, my name's James. I live on fifteen South Schaefer Street, and I am here representing a club organization called Rank the Vote Athens, which is a club dedicated to education about ranked choice voting. What brings me here today is a bill that is currently in the House Representatives and the General Assembly of Ohio. It is titled Senate Bill Sixty-three. It has currently passed the Senate and is in House Committee. And Senate Bill Sixty-three seeks to eliminate the use of ranked choice voting in the state of Ohio through withholding government funding for any local government that chooses to use ranked choice voting as a system of voting. And I'm here to ask the city of Athens to condemn the bill, essentially, to pass a resolution showing support for our constitutional right as local governments to choose how we elect our own officials, how we govern ourselves, and that's mainly it. It's a bill that violates our constitutional rights that are laid out in the Ohio Constitution, and I think that Athens should stand for everyone's constitutional rights.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other members of the public who'd like to offer any comments to the council this evening? Seeing none, I'll indicate that council is now adjourned as of seven fifty...
Motion.
Oh, motion, we have to do that, yes. A motion to adjourn. Can I get one? May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? All right, we are adjourned at seven fifty-one PM. Thank you, everyone.